January eleventh of twenty twenty-two. In first order of business is the roll call.
Okay, we'll start out with Jensen. Jensen?
I see him.
I see him, yeah. I'm going to mark him as present, Legaki.
Present.
Mayaski.
Hello.
There's Tom, okay. Hunt.
President Dan Verbal.
Okay, thank you. Schumacher.
Here.
Vanegas.
Here.
Pekowski.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Hailey.
Here.
Reeves. Maybe signing in yet. Hirsch.
Here.
Okay, so right now I have eleven Alders present.
All right, thank you. Minutes and medicine reports are in the packet. Nobody has signed up for the public comment period. Communications and presentations, any communications from council members?
Again, we just had our finance meeting, but I just again want to thank Jamin for all his work over the years and kind of writing this Stoughton ship with respect to finances and making everything so easy to understand with respect to CIP, the budget, finance, RDA, I mean, is the third finance director I've had since been on council and far superior. And I just want to really thank him for all his work and dedication to the city and wish him well on his new adventure in life.
I'll add in that I've been spoiled in having to have Jamin as the finance director here and and Erica Pickett at the school. They're both top-notch people working in their areas. So I've been really spoiled as far as chairing either of those committees.
Well stated, and here, here. Cheers to Jamin.
Here, here.
Well, at least we all agree on that.
Absolutely.
All right, Jamin's last official meeting will be tomorrow night's RDA meeting, but he's offered to help us out with a few things during the transition. So you know, I certainly appreciate everything he's done for me as well. And I think we have some pretty good systems in place for the next person to take the torch and continue to move forward. Anybody else have any other communications? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Looks like there's a couple items on the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, I think I heard Alder Reeves with the second. And was anybody like anything acted on separately from the consent agenda?
No, but I just want the clarification, the other, the operators, one is for Benushi's Bar and Grill, and the other one's for Deeks. If that's correct, because that was confusing on that one of where that other bar actually is.
Aaron Knudsen, right?
Yeah, no, it's Headquarters Bar and Grill. I have, that doesn't that's is that Deeks? Because Headquarters Bar and Grill is located in Oregon, so.
That's correct. Yeah, he made a mistake on that. The same owner owns Headquarters in Oregon and Benushi's in Stoughton. So he's applying for a license for Benushi's BBGs in Stoughton.
So all three of them are for Benushi's?
I don't have the exact information in front of me.
Well, the resolution has Michael Kirby, Aaron Knudsen, and Cole Ferguson, and Kirby and Knudsen were on BBGs, and then Ferguson was Headquarters Bar and Grill.
Okay, so that should be BBGs.
Okay, so it's not owned by Deeks, it's by BBGs.
Correct.
And can we make that change?
Yes.
In the resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
All right, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, okay, that motion does carry. The next item is going to be Resolution two of twenty twenty-two. And this one is coming from the Plan Commission. And Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, this one is Resolution two of twenty twenty-two approving a certified survey map for the Stoughton Riverfront redevelopment. And I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vanegas, Alder Person Caravelo.
This is simply that, the survey map for the Stoughton Riverfront redevelopment project area that we've been talking about and eagerly anticipating.
All right, Director Shiel, anything you want to highlight?
I just wanted to highlight two things. This is actually tied to the closing. You'll see the the condition and the recitals indicate that this is actually tied to the closing on the property, which is still anticipated at the end of February. Secondly, the name of the street, Wagon Works Way. In concept, we've been calling it River Street, but in in potential conflict with some of our emergency responders going to other streets with similar names as our districts. The Wagon Works Way Street name was put in place on the CSM for that reason.
And just to let you know, Rodney, Roger Springman is doing cartwheels for that name, so thank you for changing that. We we've been wanting Wagon Works somewhere in that development, so we're very happy.
Any questions or comments about the CMM? You know, I think one thing you'll notice is that we do have a separate parcel for the Outlet One where the the powerhouse building is. You know, we might take a look at that later, but for now, I think that's just listed as Outlet One, is that correct, Rodney?
Outlet One is the frontage along the river. It will be, it will also include the Public Stormwater Management areas, but does include the power plant as well.
So if that's correct, then that still remains within the city and the Brink's team does not want that parcel, correct?
The agreement does not include them having ownership of Outlet One at this point. That is something that would have to be dealt with at a future date.
Which is good, okay.
Any other questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. The next item is coming from CACP. I took a stab at a resolution. I don't know if we necessarily have to approve this tonight. I think that Alder Person Legaki wanted to do some more work on it, so I don't think we need to make a motion on it unless somebody wants to. But at this point, I think it would just turn it over to Alder Person Legaki, if that's okay.
Hearing no opposition, thank you. I, this is an ordinance that we're hoping to vote on actually just because of timing and what the committee had discussed at our next meeting. And just wanted to bring a little discussion here. And so the mayor sent out what is to be the resolution, but if he allows me to share screen, I have sort of been collecting these different documents and want to show you a few suggestions. Mayor, am I able to share?
You will be right about now, I believe. Yes.
Let me make this big. Maybe the share, there's the share screen. Okay. So there's a working document that hoping that if this council approves a diversity equity inclusion task force. This is the document that is sort of like the gathering places of language and hopes. But the hope is actually to have sort of a grassroots and really, really have people serving on this diversity equity task force that are dedicated to this principle right now. And so I just kind of want to go over, I've had a chance in the last two days to move this a little further for this meeting. And just want to open this for discussion, but actually what you see in front of you is probably going to be the resolution with a couple of tweaks if we all think that this is a good idea. So I just wanted to have a discussion and point out a few things. So this is an overview, it's three sentences. Just that's sort of the key sentences about what a diversity equity inclusion task force would be and serve as for the, for the Stoughton community and, and all of us. And so I just want to kind of move through this, but you'll have a chance to read this. If anyone wants to read this, I'd be glad to send out what's called a working document. And so here's the timeline that could be in place if things go as foreseen. We passed our resolution back on June ninth. CACP had discussions which led to listening sessions. And we pretty much came to the thought of recommending a task force. And so it will be here in front of you at the next meeting, but you're going to see it in a few moments. We are hoping that there is approval and that we would announce a task force, do an article, do an article in the Hub around the Martin Luther King Holiday, but really just trying to encourage people to come join us. Members will be appointed through an appointment process. That's not unlike what we've done. The only thing that we're doing is we're hoping to tweak that application, and I'll show you an example of the questions that could exist of a tweak. And then hopefully initially meeting sometime late winter, early spring. And if you approve this resolution, this committee will be charged with drafting a strategic plan and events that will allow them to really, really help engage our community. And then present that strategic plan that the city may adapt some things, all things. And the goal is that whatever that work the, the task force does would be presented to our commi- our community at large. And most likely, I've used the Committee of the Whole. Because that's where I think those meetings do belong. And if, if that needs to change, we can change that to City Council, but I think because of the involvement of department members, we probably need to be Committee of the Whole. So that's just an overview of the potential timeline. So this would be a time limited task force. And you'll see that in a little bit. But the mayor, we all took a stab at that, at that resolution, and as I spent a little bit more time over last weekend after the meeting was, was completed, I did a little research, and actually, Robert's Rules of Orders doesn't even refer to ad hoc committees. They refer to subcommittees, so that's just the first slight change. But we're asking that a diversity equity and inclusion task force, a subcommittee of Community Affairs Council Policy be formed. This is our first, whereas the city of Stoughton affirms its commitment to ensuring our community is one that is open, inclusive, and welcoming to all individuals. Regardless of many of these identities, age, gender, race, culture, sexual orientation, religion, spiritual practice, ability, or any other significant identity. Whereas the city of Stoughton, Wisconsin Common Council approved a special resolution condemning racial injustice and hate and to strive for racial equity on June ninth, twenty twenty. Whereas further Community Affairs Council Policy meetings were held, including community listening sessions on racial equity in fall twenty twenty and summer twenty twenty-one. Whereas we recognize diversity, equity, and inclusion makes our community vital and stronger. And to quote the wise words of Maya Angelou, diversity makes for a rich tapestry. And we must understand that all the threads of the tapestry are equal value, no matter what their color. So therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton that the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force be formed with a minimum of two common council members, minimum two city staff members. Given the focus on a grassroots collective, any community members appointed by the mayor with the consent of the Common Council with a passion for DEI and commitment to social justice. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force is empowered with developing a strategic plan during twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, including DEI events and opportunities in anticipating and anticipate presenting the strategic plan to the Stoughton community and community of the whole in fall twenty twenty. Those are the slight, the yellow are the slight tweaks I have made since sitting with this after committee. They reflect Robert's Rules of Orders, the word empowered as well as subcommittee. And I added the focus on grassroots collectives. I'm going to pause there. I have a couple other papers I just want to show you, but I think I'm going to pause there and ask, is there any thoughts, sharing concerns, questions?
This is Rachel, just happy to see the resolution and possible formation of this committee.
This is Matt. My only comment is that this really does not look like a subcommittee of the Community Affairs Council Policy Committee. It really is a task force. And I don't think you need to be concerned that Robert's Rules doesn't speak to a task force really, it speaks to subcommittees. I, I don't have any concern with simply recognizing it for what it is, which is a you could call it either a task force or an ad hoc committee, but it's not really a subcommittee of the CACP Committee.
Thank you for that wisdom.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Alder Person Hunt.
In the wording that you just read, we are going to present it to the community. I was wondering, will the members we're asking to be on the committee be taken from organizations from the community? I was thinking of Chamber of Commerce, School District, the business community, or will they be more individual citizens?
Fred, the we presenting this to the community and the Committee of the Whole, that is going to be the DEI task force itself. A grassroots collective, and I don't know how many times or if there have been historically, I don't, I've only lived here sixteen years. I haven't I haven't seen in the government grassroots collect, and that, that's just my knowledge. It could be limited, but the DEI task force will be presenting this. And it's, it's really offering an open path, and yes, certain groups will be encouraged, asked, invited, gotten out, word, you name it. I think how the mayor's going to appoint people, let me just, since I'm not hearing a couple, a few things, let me just go here to this application, Fred. This is a potential application, it's simply a tweak of the existing one that we have for our committees. Just for you to know, I've taken off the Aldermanic District. And I'll say more about that in a minute, but I shall say more about it now. There might be people outside of an Aldermanic District that would like to be part of this. But really though, I mean, when it comes down to whatever the task force recommends, it will be for the city of Stoughton. But diversity is, is close by, and I mean, Jolie lives outside of the city, that would be an example of someone we'd want involved. And to be honest, even me as a councilperson, I'm putting forward, we, we could fill this out and have shared answers and know what people have stated. So a far reach out, and yes, Fred, this could be a large committee. And yet a task force, and yet perhaps maybe there'll be a larger task force around some key times. And maybe even a work group within this task force that is really doing the writing of the, of the, of the of the strategic plan. We trust grassroots organizations to organize and go, but yet, if you notice, trying to gather good information to help guide that formation. So it's a long answer to your question, Fred, but I think I've given you enough context to say yes. Key people will be invited and, and yet I want to kind of see what comes, but yet I've had conversation conversations with AJ, because that's key around a lot of this. And due to busyness, I think that she's made very clear how she can contribute and be part of this, or someone from personnel. All of that's being considered. We want to do this right. And again, appointees by the mayor with this application. I probably should show you the application. It looks like a city application, and the questions have just been tweaked. What are your related experiences and strengths? I took out the word qualifications on purpose. We just wanted to know what people have that they feel is applicable to this. And then specifically asking, what are your thoughts about diversity, equity, inclusion, and has it changed over time? And can you speak to that? And then what's your motivation to be part of this working group? And then can you commit? And it's asking for about six to eight meetings each year.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I, I just commend you, Jean, and the rest of the CACP. I think this is great and something that I think when I was on that, we were all like envisioning this in the future, and you, you kept at it. And so the future is now, so thank you for your persistence and your hard work in getting this together. So I look forward to that actually, you know, their first meeting.
Yeah, now we just add that, you know, not only the council members that are on the CACP, but the community members that are on there as well have really contributed to help get to this point.
So that's what, this is what a, a resolution could look like when it comes to us two weeks from now. And then I just quickly want to point out, if anyone is interested, we have some question-answer that I, I've found a nice document out of Geneva, Illinois, that I didn't have to recreate the wheel, but actually, Stoughtonizing this document almost done. Anybody want to see that? It can be emailed to you, just ask, and I'll email you wherever this work is at. And then this is meant to be question and answer for the general public as well as people applying. So the usual, what, when, where, why, that type of stuff. I might pause here just for a few of you guys to see this, that it's just again, that key language. But it empowers them and tells them that, yep, we're going to gather data, maybe might do surveys, might talk to people, seek expert resources and have events. I think that covers a lot. So the last thing I think is a listing of potential resources to just whet your appetites. I just throw things on a sheet as I gather interesting things. The Happy Valley Strategic Plan is absolutely fascinating. They're now a town of two thousand, twenty thousand, but nineteen about a decade ago, they were less than our size, they were ten thousand. It's a planned growth community, but interesting, interesting work there. A lot of this is quite interesting, if you, if this tweaks your interest. But I just want you to know, trying to be very balanced and have a wide, wide resources open for this work group to get going, because I do really hope we have a nice strategic plan by fall of twenty twenty-three. And thank you, Matt, for your comment on Robert's Rules of Order and this being a task force. Then are you saying that it's freestanding and not under CACP, or is there anything you want us to know about that is my question, and we could talk about that next week as we probably take out a subcommittee of
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, a, a subcommittee of, of the CACP Committee would, would be made up of members of the CACP Committee. Okay. And that's not what this is. This is the City Council creating or deciding whether to create something that I think is appropriately named either a task force or an ad hoc committee. It's not a subset of another existing committee. That's, so I'm actually, I, this is a very common thing to do, to create a task force or an ad hoc committee to carry out a specific mission or task that the council is charging that group to, to address and to come back with. So that's, you know, that's all I really have to say.
Matt, it would still fall under the CACP, sort of like the Whitewater Steering Committee falls under Parks and Rec as well as the River and Trails Task Force under Parks and Rec. So I think that still needs to be there, right?
Well, do you mean, is there a direction to the task force that it should report to the CACP and not back to council? If, I mean, if that's the intent, then you could certainly say that. But the direction to this task force, this is, this is, this task force is being created not by CACP but by the council number one. So I guess my question is, what do you mean by it serves under CACP?
That's where it's grown from. That's really all that we mean.
Yeah, so essentially, CACP has come to the council and said, council, we recommend that a task force be created to do these things. So I see it as, I mean, CACP is recommending to council that this task force be created. It's a it's, the CACP is not independently creating the task force. It's come to council and said, we recommend to council that this task force be created to do these things.
Yep, no, that's the question to Jean and the rest of the CACP is like the, some other task force, do you want, do you foresee this task force reporting right back to council or reporting first to CACP and then the council?
I think the idea was to have it report, report back to CACP and then the council.
I would agree.
And so, Matt, then it would be under CACP, right?
Well, let me ask you this, is, who's creating the task force? Do you want the council to create it, or do you want the committee to create it? That's one question. If the council is creating it, but wants to direct the task That's one question, if the council is creating it but wants to direct the task force to report first to C A C P. You can certainly do that in this, in, in your document, creating this task force and giving it direction. The other thing you could do is say, city councils would say, we're not taking any action on this, this is a C A C P. Task force, they're creating it, we don't have to do anything as council at this stage. But it seems to me, everything I'm hearing is that there's the desire to have the council create this task force. So I would have the council create it, not as a subcommittee of C A C P, but as a task force and give it direction that. It should report first to C A C P.
That would be an easy whereas. Right here in between the, the community listening sessions and the, and valuing diversity. Or it could be in the therefore. Maybe it belongs in the therefore.
Well, see where it says, you're staying down here at the bottom, the task force is. You're directing it, you're anticipating a present, presenting the strategic plan to the Stoughton community and the committee of the whole. Do you wanna say first, you know, the strategic plan to the C A C P? And then to the Stoughton community and the committee of the whole?
That would work, and this committee would like to, you know, go to the appropriate. Entities within the city, the right committees to have a full inclusion of a, of a. Of a strategic plan, so yes, Matt, I think that would work. Okay. I am typing, I, I think we may have a resolution. That reflects Matt's excellent thoughts and to give to Candy for the next meeting.
Yeah, and I would just suggest if any council members have anything they wanna add or delete or clarify. To let us know so we can get that to Jean so she can take those comments into consideration.
Working document, it is open and accepting.
Yeah, we just have to be careful on how we facilitate.
To me, for now, until we get committee appointed and running. Task force appointed and running. I think here is a finished resolution that doesn't need any more tweaking. Based upon tonight's conversation. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate your time on this, trying to do this right.
All right, so having heard that, we'll bring that back at the next council meeting. So we'll move on to the next item and Jean, if you wanna just stop the share, then I can get the screen back, thank you. And let me see what the next item was, that was Resolution Four. Of twenty twenty two and this one here is coming from the Finance Committee. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Resolution Four, twenty twenty two, authorizing and directing the proper city officials. To amend the twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two City of Stoughton Capital Improvements Plan budgets. And enter into an agreement with, I believe, John Key General Contractors. Incorporated for the Yahr River Pedestrian Bridge and Riverwalk Project Contract Six Dash Twenty Twenty One. So moved.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Alder Person Caravelo, Alder Person Schumacher, go ahead.
All right, as it states in the, in the resolution header on there, I did abstain from this vote because I didn't hear. The entirety of that discussion, so I think, let's see. Either if Jayman or Alder Reeves want to address the, the wherethes in here. To be a little bit more clear on that, like I say, I wasn't in, I, I heard half of the discussion.
I'm happy to, to read it, although I think probably Director Shiel has the most up to date information. But authorizing and directing the proper city officials to amend the twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two City of Stoughton Capital Improvements Plan. C I P budget and enter into agreement with. John Key General Contractors, forgive any mispronunciation for the Yahr River Pedestrian Bridge and Riverwalk Project. Contract and I think we already had a motion in the second on that, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
So I'm gonna turn it over to Rodney, cuz I think he has the most up to date information and presentation, if that's okay?
Sure, I'd be happy to explain, we actually got five competitive bids for this project, the lowest three. We're, we're very close on this little over a million dollar construction budget. There was about a, less than a hundred thousand dollars separating the three bids. So we, we, I, we classify those as very competitive. It is however slightly above what our budget for this project entailed. There were six alternatives that we evaluated with the Finance Committee as a result of this project that were identified. Those are listed in the project and we go through those as well. The Finance Committee supported and also I believe the Parks and Rec Committee also chimed in on the alternates cuz many of them were related to the. The aesthetics and the aspects of the Riverwalk. And, and they also supported moving forward with the six bit alternatives. We as staff recommend carrying a ten percent contingency on this project during construction. And that's incorporated into the budget amendment request before you tonight. I, I think it's important to also highlight where we got to this project or how we got to this project with a great grant opportunities. Dan Glenn and others participated in putting together a number of successful grants. There's actually over eight hundred thousand dollars in grant funding. Towards this project, so kudos to them, but nonetheless, we're here to hopefully move forward with a low bidder. On this project, moving forward, all six alternates and the many, amending the budget as outlined in the resolution.
Anything, any questions or comments at this point from Alders?
Question, Tim?
Alder Person, go ahead.
Were the cost overruns in the alternatives or in the base project bid?
Some of both, a very fair question, but yes, some, some of both. And as indicated in kind of the, the summary, the fact that we got three very competitive bids within. A very tight range, that included the bid alternative selections as well, so. The overages did, did reflect both base bid overages as well as. Good alternative overages.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Alder Person, highly.
So in Parks and Rec, we did kind of. Have some recommendations on. Whether kind of rankings of the different bid alternatives. I don't know the exact order of it, but I think. Definitely bid alternative one was. At the top of the list if we needed to cut something. Personally, I think it's, you know, the, the value we're getting for that thirty thousand is not all that much. And. And perhaps like, like to gauge the interest in actually cutting that one out.
Now, the bridge pilasters is bid alternative one, the, on your screen, it, it shows an illustration. Or a sample of what it would look with and without.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Alder Person, Vanegas.
Does the width of the path change at all between the two alternatives, there's a, just the. Aesthetics of the hand railing and the columns?
It's really just the columns, it's not the width or the bridge itself, it's the vertical columns that are shown in the, the alternate, right?
Okay, yeah, I would agree with removing this one.
It's on both sides of the bridge, the north side and the south side, when, there's four pilasters that would be included in this alternate.
I guess I, I think aesthetically, since these are the gateways going into a new development and going into a. Mount Park as opposed to just Cooper's Causeway, it dresses it up and makes it. More special and more, you know, complete. And in the long run, I think it, it, it just makes it look better. If it was just a bridge, like the pedestrian bridge by Naughty Norski, no, I wouldn't recommend it. But we're talking about a major entrance way to a major development and our biggest park. And so I guess. It has some. It, it, it should stand out and it should be dressed up a little bit more, in my, my opinion.
I would agree with Regina, that if we're gonna do it, let's do it right, make it look. Look inviting.
I also agree with Regina on that.
Yep, and I would chime in, this is Lisa, I also agree in it, you know, as Director Shiel highlighted, eight hundred and some thousand dollar grant. You know, I, I've seen these finished projects, very similar projects in other cities that I've visited. And it's those little things that really, really, really make a difference, in my opinion. So I think, you know, the twenty nine thousand is a very small investment. For, I think, a fairly big impact aesthetically, so I would, I would like to keep that in as well.
Any other thoughts or comments about bid alternative number one?
I, I'll say that. That. For the percentage of money that's being spent on this project, this is a, a very minor amount. I agree that the overall look and, and feel for this project will, it will enhance it. And I would hope that we would think more of this, on this direction for more than just this bridge and we start doing other project, infrastructure projects in the city. To give us a, of, the, the city a feel that's of permanence and of quality.
All right, any other comments?
Could, could we maybe look at some of the other projects and see if we could find a source of some savings in those?
So here's bid alternative number two and, you know, you can see basically, you know, the lighting. Which, you know, I think, you know, it's in the eye of the beholder, I think that this is hopefully gonna be a well-traveled area. And that in lighting will really, you know, enhance the, you know, not only for safety, but really just enhance the. You know, the feature is part of the development. I think that was kind of the idea and anybody on the R D A can, or Park and Rec can certainly, you know, chime in on that as well.
And that's the whole thing, it's, it's about safety, the people are traveling back and forth during fair time and it's at night. And it's, it's. It's making things aesthetically pleasing, but also with safety on that one.
Any other comments on this one?
Keep the alternative.
All right, then I'll move on to number three. And this is the, the light poles, and I think this one actually saved us money, didn't it?
Yeah, it's the base on the right-hand side, so the pole is actually shorter. Ironically, it's a deduction of twenty three hundred dollars to have a, a decorative base as opposed to a longer pole.
No, just kidding.
More of that. And then number four is the, the solar.
Yeah, the solar array is something we've talked about as part of this project from the inception. Certainly it is an array that really is intended to offset the power usage for the, the. The Riverwalk lighting as well as the bridge lighting that's proposed on this project.
Yeah, I think the hope is, you know, it'll, you know, there'll be some cost savings, but that will be, will really depend on. You know, what it gets used for down there, it'd be used for the lighting, but it also may be, you know, used for. You know, events if, if somebody wants to, you know, connect into an outlet and. You know, whether it be like, you know, a food card or music or something like that, I think that would be something we'd have to look at. So it's really hard to project out, I think, what a cost savings could be, you know, in utility cost.
But also, this whole development on the river front side is. We're trying to make it as green and sustainable as possible. And this adds to that and it's. It's sort of like our flagship of what we'd like future neighborhoods to consider when being built. Is to have as much sustainability, much renewable energy as possible and so. We have to lead at some point.
Is there information on the size of this array and the. Power generation that would be needed to offset? And also, do we have? A place in the plan where these would fit?
All good questions, it was sized to accommodate the lighting as part of this project, the, the bollard lighting, the pole lighting. As well as the bridge lighting, it's planned to be placed on the far east side, on the north end of the trail. There's gonna be a concrete pad area just to the north of the trail itself, but that's where it would be positioned.
I was gonna ask, are these movable? Or the pant, does the panel actually move or would it be a good idea to look at if there's any buildings? In the plan that these could be placed on?
So there, there aren't any buildings, we did, we did explore that slightly. Cuz we were trying to time it potentially with a clubhouse that might be the next phase of the break development. But that didn't time out well, so there isn't a building, we certainly didn't want to encumber the environment around the, the power plant, so. Purposely, we position these to the far east side of the site for that reason. They are fixed, they're fixed panels, so they're not ones that rotate, but I don't believe that we, and there should not be any. Solar obstructions based on the position where they'll be placed.
Rodney, with respect to that, does it have to be on a concrete slab? I mean, a lot of. The big solar arrays are going on farms and other places are actually interplanting. Pollinator habitats and other crops and stuff, but I'm just thinking, why put it on a concrete slab? Why can't we have other plantings, native plantings around it as opposed to. That's kind of a eyesore with a concrete slab.
Yeah, it's certainly a good question, we can explore that some, certainly with a fixed panel. You, you're not gonna have as much sunlight, but that doesn't mean you still can't have vegetation in that area, so we, we can explore that. When I talked about a concrete slab, it's not a, a, a large facility, even the solar array is quite small, so. It, it was intended to provide the footing and foundation, but also pad around it, we can explore whether that needs to be part of it or not.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions about alternative four? All right, here's number five.
Number five is really just putting electrical receptacles on the top of the poles for the, we'd anticipate potentially seasonal lighting or some type of. Decorations that may or may not be timed, but installing this after the fact. Is near impossible and, and certainly not cost of. uh timed, but installing this after the fact i- is near impossible, and and certainly not cost-effective to do it afterwards.
People have been asking to bring this back, I've seen in the social media channels, so I think that's exciting.
Any other comments about number five? All right, and then this was kind of the breakdown I had up earlier. And then I think Rodney had mentioned that there is a built-in contingency. Um, you know, hopefully, they'll cover some of these items, well, I guess we'll see. Um, there was some talk about trying to reuse some materials from buildings that have been uh removed. You know, we'll we'll see whether or not that that is feasible. So we'll continue to look at other options as far as trying to to minimize the costs and and stay within, you know, the budget and and certainly the bids. All right, um, I believe we had a motion on that, right?
Yeah, motion and second.
Okay, certainly if somebody wanted to make an amendment, they could, so I'll I'll give you an opportunity if that's something you wanna do. And if not, we'll we'll vote on the motion, so is there anyone that wants to make an amendment? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion? That motion does carry, all right, thank you. And then the next item is a resolution to remain a fourth-class city, I'm not sure if everybody even knew we were a fourth-class city. And this was brought to my attention by Candy, our clerk, is she was doing some election information. There was a suggestion that we at least take a look at the fact that we were a fourth-class city, we would be eligible to become a third-class city. So we took it to the C A C P for consideration, and then your packet, we kinda highlighted what the uh effects of that would be. Um, so at this point, I guess I would turn it over to uh C A C P Chair Alder Kristen Healy.
All right, um, yeah, we uh took this up in C A C P. As uh, you know, honorable as it sounds to be a third-class city. Um, we decided that uh with the uh state regulations that really the um, the burdens would be uh more than the benefits of changing to be a third-class city. Um, so I will make a motion to approve this and remain a fourth-class city in the laws of the state.
Second.
Second by Alder Kristen Johnson, anything else you'd like to elaborate on, Alder Kristen Healy?
Uh, sure, we had the um, couple of the key things were third-class would buy us a little bit more of um extra territorial jurisdiction, it would be uh three miles beyond our borders versus one point five. Um, we decided that was not really a a huge factor and would really create more work for the council, um, we'd be approving, you know, zoning uh decisions farther farther out from town and less relevant to town. The uh re- requirement for um having a plumbing supervisor on staff, that's not something that um utility currently has. And um, that would be the, you know, a new requirement we would have as a third-class city. And then the uh burden to get onto the ballot as especially um particularly um mayoral candidate would be uh four times higher in a third, third-class city. And many of us have struggled with uh trying to get those signatures out in the dead of winter and the shortest days of the year, and um I think it's just discouraging to uh people seeking public office to try to find those two hundred signatures. Those those were the main points. So I can uh turn it over to discussion.
Any questions or comments?
I have one.
Uh, go ahead.
Um, I heard, I heard the uh the disincentives, what are the incentives for being a third-class city?
Uh, really, I think it would just be the uh extraterritorial jurisdiction, unless I'm missing something. Um, another thing that was mentioned is the library board would uh statutorily, statutorily have to be two people larger.
And I believe it already is.
Oh, it is, oh.
We are currently nine board members, if you are counting me and Trish from schools. But we're currently at nine, and we've had lots of interests, which is awesome.
Was was I missing anything in terms of the benefit?
No, there's really no financial benefit, and I think that, you know, there would be a cost if we had to hire a licensed plumber to be on staff, and we have two licensed building inspectors that you know, have are capable of of doing that work, so I think that would be an unnecessary cost uh to the city or the utilities that really, we're not really interested in in having. Some of the other uh surrounding municipalities, I think Verona and Fitchburg have also been eligible and have chosen not to, I'm not really sure about Oregon, man, what are they considered?
Uh, well, if they're a village, so they're not, yeah, they don't have a classification like cities do.
Yeah, someday they might be a city.
Yeah, not anytime soon.
Yeah, and so, you know, the other municipalities really haven't chosen to do that because there's really no benefit, you know. Um, and the extraterritorial, you know, I, we don't think it's necessary, and it could potentially cause hardest feelings for no reason uh with the, with our neighboring township, so um I I don't really see that as a benefit. Any other questions or comments? All right, um we had a motion in a second, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion does carry, uh the next item is uh Resolution six of twenty twenty-two, and this is a discussion, the possible action regarding an agreement with the town of Rutland uh for improvements to Oak Opening and Deer Point Drive within the town, and uh some of the council members might recall, um, a couple of years ago, we we entertained having a discussion with the township um to have an agreement similar to this, we've added some things um, in order to do road improvements on Deer Point and Oak Opening, leading uh south into uh Kettle Park West to make that connection. And the idea would be to get permission from the township to make those improvements so we could widen the road and and make that a nice uh entrance into that development. Um, since then, um, we also have the fifty-one west development. And so we have added language to include a connection going to the north on Oak Opening Drive, kinda behind Stone Lumber if you would, to make that connection. And then there would also be um an opportunity to put a water line in there so we can loop the water uh to serve the fifty-one west development. So that's a little bit of background, um Rodney and I had a couple of meetings with the township uh as well as Jill and Brett uh met on site, and then we had a follow-up meeting at the town board meeting to kinda introduce this idea, I think that our initial discussions have been favorable. Uh, they would plan, if approved by a city council, to put it on their next agenda. Um, and I'll let Rodney and then possibly Matt fill in the blanks.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, um, the council might recall that we acted on this or or discussed this in closed session at the last uh the last go-around, so that's partly why we we still have it listed as an op- option to go in the close if we'd like to. Um, I I would characterize the discussions as being productive at this stage. Um, a couple of years ago, we we did not have the productivity that we have with the town at this point. Uh, in general terms, they're supportive of this agreement, in my opinion, based on our our discussion with the board. The change to it uh is outlined about the area north of Deer Point as well as the water main inclusion. Um, that's the addition, there there's one other addition or two other additions that I think are worthy of highlighting. Uh, the first of which is, they requested that we be responsible for snow removal in these sections of the town roads. Um, and you'll you'll recognize, if you can go to the screen that actually shows the area, Mayor, I think this one's a good illustration. Uh, obviously, this links the fifty-one west to the Kettle Park West development. Um, our discussions with Public Works Director Abe Bear certainly indicated a a willingness to be able to accommodate that plow request. Uh, recognizing that it it connection of the two developments is is the route between them uh would likely be how they traverse anyhow to connect um or or do the work in either subdivision, so um, that did not seem to be a a significant uh request, or or certainly one, I think, to suitable. The other one uh we requested is to not impose weight restrictions on the town roads. Uh, as you can appreciate, we're putting in investment into these town roads to improve the pavement, both width and quality. Uh, we'd hate to see them put weight restrictions on these roads, and also on Oak Opening Drive east uh or on Rutland Dunn Town Line Road east of where Oak Opening will intersect with it. So from fifty-one to Oak Opening Drive would also not be able to be weight restricted. So that's the, that's the crux of the agreement. If we get a favorable endorsement of the agreement tonight, it'll go to the town board on February fifth. I I believe there's, their town attorney will be reviewing it in advance of that, but uh very favorable discussions with them at their last board meeting.
Thank you, Rodney, anything you want, do they add attorney, Greg, me?
No, I think you guys have summed it up pretty well.
All right, any initial questions from councils?
I have, I have one.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I also wanted wanted to say, it looks as if this plan, um, I really wasn't involved um in this this from its inception, but it appears that this may give us um some nice alternative routes on bicycles up to Rutland Dunn. So that's great, um, I I'm new to the weight limit restriction issue, so I don't exactly understand why we wouldn't have or wouldn't want. If if there's a, if there's something that I'm I'm not quite getting there about the weight limits, Rodney.
Th- this would still remain, these would still remain town roads, and towns have the ability to put weight restrictions on their roadways.
Oh, okay.
Now granted, this is a fairly industrial-natured area for them already, so I don't know that that would ever become an issue. Um, mu- much like when we made improvements to Williams Drive, we worked with the town of Pleasant Springs and Dunkirk to make sure that they didn't impose restrictions to allow us to have uh appropriate vehicles get into our business park, for example.
I see, okay.
So it's just a, just an understanding of the type of traffic that may traverse these roads.
Okay, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Al- along those lines, Rodney, do it, so that has to do with whether or not the roads can handle semis or construction or stuff for, the people need supplies or all that, does that also have to deal with the width of the road if there's no weight limit?
Well, the width of the road, uh we're we're constructing it to a wider standard, that's outlined in the agreement. So it's actually gonna, pavement width is actually gonna be ten feet wider than it currently is already, uh irrespective of the weight as- aspect of it.
Rodney, this is Matt, is it fair to say that, you know, we're building this up to a to a city urban standard road, street profile that is designed to handle heavier uh loads than typical town roads would, is that a fair statement?
I think it it's fair to the point of it's not a completely urbanized section. Um, generally in the city, we see curb and gutter and and the like, this is still gonna be a rural cross-section. But the pavement thickness and uh subgrade would be uh far superior to what they have out there now. And be improved to handle those weight loads better.
So Rodney, going back to what uh Alder Tekolsky said, so with the wider road, which on the Deer Point Road, it was supposed to include like a bike lane, if I remember right, with all our discussions a few years ago, when we did that with K P W. Is this also gonna be wide enough and have a designated bike lane or not?
Yeah, the pa- well, the pavement width would accommodate a five foot on either side of the, all the roadways in the town segments here. Just to accommodate bike usage. Will it be marked as a bike lane? I I don't know that it'll be striped as a bike lane, but the pavement width would accommodate it it's being enlarged by five feet on either side of this, the roadway, so it would accommodate that pedestrian slash bike in a safer condition, but it's not gonna be urbanized with a curb and gutter and a separation from the traffic lane.
Right, no, I'm just talking about having some painting, so people are you know, that have like marking, you know, a nice stencil of a bike and, you know, a straight line. You know, it's the markings, designated bike lane versus, they don't need to have it off the road, but just designated as bike. So I think that was part of the discussion way back for the K P W and Deer Point, was it's gonna be wider and accommodate, have that bike lane in it.
It's certainly the intention to have it wider to accommodate that, both on Deer Point and all of Oak Opening, correct?
But that's not exactly what she's asking you, Rodney, she's asking you if you're going to paint and designate five-foot sections on either side of that road for bike, for bike lane use.
Thanks for clarifying that, I I don't, the agreement does not uh indicate we'll do so at this point. That is something we could add to the agreement, if that's the direction we want to to go, and we can request that in this agreement with them, but currently it is not as part of the the improvement to be painted.
I I think in the spirit of what was discussed a few years ago, and bike safety being paramount to, I think, the majority of this council, I guess I would like that added into the agreement.
Okay. Are you making that an amendment?
Yes, it is an amendment, thank you, Tom.
At this point, at this point, we don't have a motion, so we can include that into the motion when we get to that point. Any other items that you'd like to see us, or?
I have one more related question.
Sure.
Which is, um, you know, if we put the striping and and that, um, the marking in there are expenditures and maintenance associated with that, do we have to examine those at all before we do that?
Those would certainly be expected to be incurred by the city. I I would anticipate the town requesting us to do so, uh we did not explore that as an expenditure at this point. Um, but the type of paint that's used, yeah, can be, can be important to consider.
Okay.
Any other thoughts or comments? All right, hearing none, so I guess at this point I would, you know, entertain a motion. Um, unless you feel a need to go in the closed session to talk about it.
I move to uh approve with the addition of the bike lane markings.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, any? All right, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Um, that's all we had for tonight.
Oh, Ma- Mayor, actually, I think that was just a motion on the, to, to add that language.
Well, we didn't have a regular motion on the floor.
So. Motion to approve the agreement with the amendment or just the, just to add that language to the, the document?
To add the language.
Right.
Okay.
Oh. Okay, yeah, I, I thought it was all part of the motion.
It is.
That's not what the motion was, though. That's the problem. The motion was just, uh, stated as an amendment, adding the language for the bike lane.
No, it's not what I said. What I said was I, I motioned to, to approve the. To approve with the addition of language for. For marking of the lanes. That's not an amendment.
Okay.
Added the addition.
I didn't hear it that way, that's fine.
That's how I heard it, so.
Okay.
Candy will capture that, um, in a minute, so, uh, that motion did carry that. Um. And I think that's all we had for this.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of adjourn, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you, have a good night.
Night.
Good night. Bye, everyone. Hey, well, everyone.